The fortieth meeting of the Mayor and City Council will come to order. Please note, if you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list to my right, provided on the table. And I reserve the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each agenda item. And tonight, we'll allow three minutes for each agenda item. I'll ask everybody to rise for the invocation by Reverend Warren Litchfield and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Moe.
Almighty God, we gather this evening hour to conduct the business of this city. We offer our prayer for our mayor, for the president, for the members of the city council, and fall in authority, under to them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duty in behalf of all thy people. We commend this city, this county, and this state, this nation, and thy people to thy merciful care and understanding. We ask a special prayer to all those who have been ravished by these terrible hurricanes. Remember those who lie upon a bed of affliction; come to those who mourn. Hear our prayer in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Call the roll, Ms. Rao.
Mr. Ricks?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Ms. Crery?
Here.
Mr. Smalls?
Here.
President Laz?
Here.
Mayor Moe?
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Five, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1917. Text Amendment Number 248, An Ordnance of the Mayor and City Council Amending Laurel City Code, Chapter 20, Section 20-1.7, Definitions, and Section 20.6.23, Accessory Structures, Bulk Regulations, to Authorize Little Free Libraries in Certain Zones and Providing for an Effective Date. I'll note, we have a court reporter present for this agenda item. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. Christian, you have the floor.
Good evening. Text Amendment Application Number 248, Ordinance Number 1917, was filed on July 26, 2017, the Mayor and City Council Laurel, to amend the Laurel City Code, Chapter 20, Article 1, Division 1, Section 20-1.7, Definitions, and Section 20-6.23, Accessory Structures, Bulk Regulations, to Authorize Little Free Libraries in Certain Zones and Providing for an Effective Date. On August 21, 2017, the proposed ordinance was sent to the Maryland Department of Planning for comment. The department had no comment. The file contains a certification of publication verifying that this application in public hearing was advertised as required by law in the September 7 and 14 edition of the Prince George's Centennial. A memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission to the Mayor and City Council dated September 15, 27 reads as follows. At the regular meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission held on September 12, 2017, the following action was taken on the subject zoning application. On motion by Mr. Wilford, seconded by Mr. Wilson, and carried on a roll call vote of all members present, the planning commission recommended that the mayor and city council approve text amendment application number 248 as presented in the proposed ordinance number 1917. That concludes the reading of the file, Mr. President.
Thank you, Christian. I'll open the public hearing at 7:05. I have one person signed up to speak on this agenda item, Cheryl Dyer. Cheryl, if you state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Cheryl Dyer. I live at 310 Fourth Street, and I just wanted to thank you for considering building these little free libraries. I've seen them in other towns, and I think it makes our community look like we care about literacy, and it provides a sense of welcome, and yay, y'all. So, I just wondered, how many will we have? What will their design be? And do we have an idea about where they'll be placed?
Yes, 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 and yes.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna sit down and listen then. Thank you.
Christian, can you?
Christian. You want to answer?
Sure. The reason, one of the reasons why the little free libraries came to the attention of the city, a resident that lived on Montgomery Street wanted to put up one, but it didn't allow for it in our code. Therefore, the city took it upon to add it to the code. So, for individuals, residents, or business owners that are looking to add little free libraries in certain areas of the city, will come to City Hall and apply for it. So, as of right now, the only one that is inquired is on Montgomery Street.
Are there plans for some, like at the river and at the lake?
That hasn't been discussed as of right now.
Do I have to answer that for you, Mr. President?
Cheryl, as we had discussed in the Arts Council meeting last week, the Department of Parks and Recreation absolutely has plans to put some into some of the parks. We haven't really decided if we're going to use a kit, if we're gonna build them out of recycled materials. We have a lot of different ideas, but as you know, that was one of the things that we were proposing to the Arts Council to see what ideas you all had, and maybe some other people had, to make sure that we're putting some original structures into the parks. But it's definitely something that we're, that we want to continue with.
Let me just say, my wife gets HGTV, and she gets Colonial something and Southern Living, and she gets them all. Okay, so I did notice this month that there was a little blurb about free libraries. I'm gonna pull that out and give it to Christian, because what it showed was a, maybe a foot square with a nice roof on it, and it had a door, piece of plexiglass in it, so you could see what was inside. And I guess it was weatherproof because it sits out in the open. But I think that it's gonna require, just from my perspective, somebody that's handy with wood, like Michael Green, to maybe volunteer to make one. Look at Michael. He's, I know he's very good with wood. But again, somebody that's good with wood, that works with wood, you know, maybe we can solicit people to work with Parks and Recreation and planning to make a couple so we can get them put out there. And then, of course, you have to have them where they can be seen so they don't get vandalized. That's the other issue. So unfortunately, we have people that go around doing damage to nice-looking things. But again, I think Montgomery Street's a good start, and hopefully, we'll have some others around the city, too. Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I've also seen them up in New England, and they're in the little quaint towns and that sort of thing. And again, people are very ingenious about how they do it. They will take an old tree stump and then use that as a platform to then build this quaint little bookshelf inside of it and offer the books for free to be passed around and returned if wanted. So, there's a lot of imagination, as you said, that goes into it.
Right.
But nevertheless, it can be very, very instrumental.
Okay. Fred?
I think the opportunities and the possibilities are endless, but one thing that we shouldn't lose sight of is regardless of how attractive they may be, they have to be maintained. And so, whoever installs them should certainly keep that in mind, that responsibility is not on the city to maintain these libraries, but it resides with the folks in the community who install them.
Thank you, Smalls. Anything else? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Is anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:10. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President.
Ms. Crery.
I recommend that we approve Ordinance Number 1917, Text Amendment Number 248.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Any further discussion? Call the roll, Ms. Rao.
Ms. Crery?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Laz?
Yes.
Mayor Moe?
I concur, and I want to thank the council for working with the administration on this. I think it's, as you've heard, it's all positive. So, thank you, Chris, for your work as well.
Okay, I'll move to Agenda Item Number Six, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1919. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Council approving and concurring with City of Laurel Planning Commission's approval of a conception, whoa, conceptual site plan for property known as 7003 Van Dusen Road, Laurel, Maryland, Zone MXT, and providing for an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. Christian, you have the floor.
Good evening again. MXT Conceptual Site Plan Number 817, excuse me, 872 was filed on August 1, 2017 by BB Spring Arbor LLC, 3905 National Drive, Burtonsville, Maryland, 20866, for a conceptual approval of the project known as Spring Arbor for property located at 003 Van Dusen Road, owned by Rivera Van Dusen LLC, consisting of 6.453 acres to include a townhouse community of up to 60 units. On August 14, 2017, a request asking for comments was sent to the Maryland State Highway Administration, Prince George's County Health Department, Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation, Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission, Maryland Department of Planning, and Prince George's County Public Schools. Responses were received from the following agencies on the following dates. Prince George's County Health Department Environmental Engineering Program, September 6, 2017. Prince George's County Public School, September 11, 2017. All responses have been made part of the official record for this application. On August 14, 2017, a request asking for comments was sent to the City of Laurel Police Department, the City of Laurel Departments of Parks and Recreation, Public Works, and the Office of the Fire Marshal. On August 21, 2017, a response was received from the Fire Marshal and the Laurel Police Department and made part of the official record. A response dated August 25, 2017 was received from the Department of Public Works and has been made part of the official record. On August 29, 2017, a notice of the filing of the application was sent to all contiguous property owners. All return receipts were received with the exception of Willshire HOA 6800 Iron Bridge Lane, Laurel, Maryland 20707, Joseph Spelling 6807 Iron Bridge Lane, Laurel, Maryland 20707, and Seth Giamifee 14304 Stroud Court, Laurel, Maryland 20707. The file contains a certificate of publication verifying that this application in public hearing was advertised as required by law in the September 7 and September 14, 2017 editions of the Prince George's Centennial. A memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission to the Mayor and City Council dated September 15, 2017 reads as follows. At the regular meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission held on September 12, 2017, the following action was taken on the subject application. On motion by Mr. Wilson and seconded by Mr. Wilford and carried on a roll call vote of all members present, the planning commission approved MXT Conceptual Plan Number 817 for the Spring Arbor Townhouse and requested the concurrence of the mayor and city council and provide an effective date as presented in the technical staff report. That concludes the reading of the file, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Christian. Open the public hearing at 7:15. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at 7:15 and a half. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Ricks?
Move for the approval of Ordinance Number 1919, is read into the record with the direction.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll, Ms. Rao.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Crery?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Laz?
Yes.
Mayor Moe?
I concur.
Okay. Before, we're gonna go to the general public hearing next, we've got a lot of children here. They gotta get home and do their homework. But I want to recognize Mayor DePietro is in the audience with us today, and Councilman Rick Wilson's with us also. We're lucky to have two ex-elected officials with us today. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Nine, General Public Hearing. I'll open the general public hearing at 7:16. And don't mind the recorder, he's court reporter, he's just gonna fold up his shop and go home. I'll move first to Jessica Norton to speak. And Jessica, if you'd come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have the floor.
My name is Jessica Norton. I live at 418 Montgomery Street, and I'm here to talk about backyard chickens. There have been a large movement nationwide for kind of a grassroots effort to bring backyard chickens to various small cities and towns and stuff. And I feel like it'd be a great addition for Laurel. There are many benefits, I have found, just doing my research and stuff like that. They're very educational for our children. I have two children, and I think it'd be really good for them to see, like, where their food comes from, how to care for the animals, the responsibility. They keep down a lot of pests and bugs, including mosquitoes and ticks, which are a big threat They're very friendly as pets, and so a lot of people say they're very good and, like, interactive, and the kids can actually touch them and feel them and, you know, observe the birds. So, I was hoping, and the fresh eggs, obviously, forgot about that, the fresh, natural, you know, healthy eggs for us. I know there's a lot of concerns about, like, noise and stuff like that, but there have been many research on if you don't have roosters. The hens still lay their eggs, and you still get to, you know, benefit from that, and hens are a lot quieter, and they are, you know, they go to sleep at night, and so you don't have to worry so much about noises. If you have a dog, most likely, your dog will be a lot noisier than any hen that you'll have. You can, any disease or any, like, dirtiness, if you keep your hens at the coop clean and you keep them enclosed and stuff like that, there's nothing to be concerned about. Most birds don't have any different diseases than, say, a pigeon or something like that. And they don't have any, you know, we have the predators, if you keep them safe in a good enclosure, in a good coop, you don't have to worry about the predators getting to them as well. So, I think it'd be a great thing to address, and I know this has been addressed before, but I think it'd be a great thing to address again, especially in this day and age with whole Howard County having backyard chickens, Rockville, Annapolis, Frederick. There are a ton of wonderful historical cities that are currently allowing backyard chickens, so I think this would be a good item to bring up again.
Thank you, Jessica.
Mr. President, may I ask a few questions?
Mr. Ricks?
Could you tell me, based on your research, I'm sure, what the normal-size flock you would be looking at?
Most places I've looked at, like, the city-wise, that have, like, the city backyard chickens, have somewhere between, like, five to eight chickens. So, some of them even, like Baltimore City, for example, it depends on how many square footage you own. So, with the first, oh goodness, I forget the amount, but for a smaller lot, they might only allow two chickens. And then, as your lot gets larger and larger, you might allow more and more chickens. So, if you have a quarter acre, maybe you're allowed six to eight max, you know? But there's normally a max of eight to 10, like, depending on your lot size and stuff like that. But there's some chicken, you know, some places allow just six, which I think is what Annapolis does.
Again, based on your research, what kind of square footage are you talking about for the pen and the roosting house and that type of thing?
I believe most places require you to have, oh goodness, let me see. Each chicken, like, needs to have two square foot. Each coop, this is from Rockville, it says each coop shall provide at least two square feet per chicken, and the outside enclosure is adequate fencing to contain, you know, contain the chickens in the property and stuff like that. So, they need to, like, their coop itself per chicken, in this case, needs to have two square feet. And then, I guess from there, you can depend on how much room you need to have and stuff like that. There's a lot of huts that are movable, and so you can have a small little hut to store your chickens, and then have a fencing area that you can move daily so the chickens can have fresh bugs to take from and stuff like that.
Fresh bugs.
It makes those eggs so much healthier with all those vitamins in there.
As opposed to stale bugs.
Yes, exactly. Get rid of those things.
What I'd like to do, I know that you talked to the president about this coming up on one of our work sessions so we can have an open discussion on it. What I'd like to do is, since you're in my ward, I think Mrs. Nicholas and I would like to maybe visit your house and take a look at what you propose to do so that we're informed, and if you would provide our clerk, Mrs. Rao, with the information that you've gathered so far so that we can review it prior to our work session.
Yep.
Is that possible?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Fred, did you have a comment?
I just have a question, and it may be considered a dumb question, but if roosters are not part of this backyard chicken, how do you have eggs?
So, a chicken lays an egg whether or not.
Does it?
It's, the rooster is there to fertilize the eggs. So, a chicken will always give about one egg a day, not normally more, but most chickens consistently lay one leg and egg, one egg a day. If there's a rooster there, there's a chance that the hen sits on that egg enough, you'll get a baby chick. Otherwise, you just have that egg. So, most of the eggs you buy at the grocery store are not fertilized, and so you, there's no chance of them actually coming up.
Well, I learned something today. I had no idea. Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Anything else?
Fred, I apologize.
Thank you, Jessica.
I didn't know.
Okay, I'll call now Catherine Simmons. Come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello there. My name is Catherine Simmons, 310 Sandy Spring Road, just a couple blocks from here. I'm also here to speak on the chicken issue, and actually, Mr. Smalls, that's a very common question, and so please, you know, I get that question a lot myself. And it does take a little bit of thinking, thinking through how that works, but they're fascinating creatures, chickens are. I wanted to speak to you very briefly about, I did, a little research I did, I think Jessica did a good job of giving you the overview. I spoke with an enforcement officer, an animal control officer, for Anarone County. Now, of course, their regulations are very different because it's countywide, so they, they used to have, you had to have 40,000 square feet, and then they changed it to 10,000 square feet. But, but Anarone County includes Annapolis City as well, so that's why I wanted to speak with her. The enforcement officer mentioned that when they changed it, she didn't mention exactly the date, she had been fearful that they would get more complaints, obviously making her job more difficult, but it actually turned out not to be the case. She said that there were between five and 10 complaints per month for, you know, relating to chickens. And so, she said that that amount did not go up at all. She said the majority of those complaints were for noise and secondarily for smell. Now, what she did point out was that most of the chicken owners that were, had these complaints lodged against them, were unlicensed. So, they were, they were already kind of breaking the law in that case, just people that, I guess, just had them and didn't bother to get them, go through the proper channels. In that case, what she said they typically do to enforce is they give them ample time, they give the owners ample time to remove their chickens themselves, because they said, you know, we don't have the time and energy to go around just collecting everybody's chickens that are unlicensed. And then, they do have, they do have fines for these people that are unlicensed. She said that only in very rare cases could ever confiscate chickens, and then only when animals are in very poor and unsanitary and dangerous conditions. She mentioned that the great majority of chickens were very well taken care of in Anarone County, even if they were unlicensed. Lastly, I did make sure to ask her if she had any concerns about the way the permitting was done and the ordinance was in the county, and she said that she had no concerns about having chickens in Anarone County. So, I just wanted to add that to the background from an animal control officer in Anarone County. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine. Last person I have sign up to speak is Dorothy. If you'd come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I am Dorothy Stur, and I live on 416 Montgomery Street. So, I am here about to talk about backyard chicken. So, I think it would be a good idea to have backyard chickens because I have had a lot of pets in the past, and I think it would be the craziest pet, but I think it would be a pretty good experience for kids of my age because they could play around with the chickens, and as my neighbor Lauren said, they would, chickens do eat bugs. And, well, that's all I have. Thank you.
We'll take this up at a future work session. Do you want to say something, Mayor?
No, I just wanted to make sure you knew your message.
Terrible with the microphone. And Christian will have some work to do. Appreciate all the information you sent us, and that'll become part of the file, and we look forward to speaking to you in the future. And Christian will let you know when it's on the work session agenda, okay? Or, Ms. Rao. Thanks again for coming. Go home and do your homework. I see her back there. She wants to get home. Okay, thanks again. Move to Agenda Item Number Seven, Approval of Minutes of the 39th Meeting of September Okay, we've given these to review. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I move for approval of the 39th, the minutes for the 39th meeting of September 11, 2017.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call the roll, Ms. Rao.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Crery?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Laz?
Yes. Move to Agenda Item Number Eight, Report of the Mayor and City Council. And tonight, I will start with Ms. Crery.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the 17th, we had the annual dog show sponsored by Park and Rec. It went very well. It's been suggested that maybe we have it a little later next year in the day. The mayor spends a few hours in church every Sunday, so maybe when he gets out of church and a few others, we could get that taken care of. I want to send out congratulations to Rusty the Great Dane, who was the winner and best in show that day. He wore a bow tie and a tuxedo top hat, I guess that's called. Also, on public safety, night out, thanks to Rich and Marty and the wonderful job everybody did down at Goody Lake. We all attended the ribbon cutting at the Guitar Center, and it looks like it's gonna be quite a place. It's very energetic. And this weekend, I attended the Mary Lehman's Family Fair out at the Fairland Complex. Every time I go out there, I say I'm gonna go back, and I usually do, and go through their trails out there, because it's a wonderful facility. And yesterday was Riverf And yesterday was River Fest, and that was well-attended and got to see lots of people that we usually don't get to see. And that's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Crary. Move to Ms. Nicholas.
Thank you. I just ask that we continue to pray for all the hurricane victims and families that are affected.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Mr. Ricks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to also thank the Main Street Business Association for the great River Fest that they put on. It seems like with this nice weather, they're, and they've changed the dates on it, it seems like it's in the right slot to really be successful, and so I think that's where they're going to keep it. We commented a couple of times on that. I've received notice from the Maryland Department of Transportation State Highways that the Irs, Allen Myers, Maryland Foundation, it's not a foundation, from Fallston, will be doing Route One through Laurel. They'll be patching, paving, restriping all the lanes on the 1.7 mile section of US1. They'll be repairing and replacing damaged existing curbs and gutters and sidewalks. They'll be replacing drainage inlets and cleaning drainage pipes. They'll be installing roadway concrete bus pads. They'll be upgrading traffic signals with LED signal heads and striping for bicycle-compatible lanes. We've been putting, we've been trying to get this, Mr. Free and his staff have been trying to get them to move on this for some time. We're finally getting notice that they're going to do it now, and so I want to thank Mr. Free and his staff for being persistent in getting that done. Been a mess for some time. That's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Mr. Smalls?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the opportunity to attend many of the events that Councilwoman Crary mentioned, Mary Lehman's Family Fair, the opening of the Guitar Center, which was a particular thrill to me, since I've been a music lover for many years. I can't play an instrument, and I only sing in my car in the shower, but there was, there was a lot of great instruments there. They do music lessons, instrument lessons, and I'm thinking about getting a couple of my grandsons signed up to play guitar. I attended also National Night Out Part Two, which was well-attended, and I had a good time there. River Fest yesterday. I also attended the Maryland Municipal League's HEPA, which is the Hometown Environmental, I'm sorry, Hometown Emergency Preparedness Committee. One of the things that this committee is going to focus on this session is the opioid epidemic that is plaguing our entire country. At our next meeting, we will have Clay Stamp, who's the director of the Governor's Opioid Operational Crisis Center. One of the charges for, for the HEPA committee is that we'll be looking at developing strategies to assist municipalities in combating the opioid crisis. So we'll be working with not just our police departments, but healthcare providers and others as we work to introduce some strategies. That's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Smalls. Saturday, September 16th, attended the library forum called by the Prince George County Library Board. Your council and mayor also attended along with Mary Lehman. One of the things I found amazing was one of the friends of the Laurel Library said she had a four-year-old come up to her, did not know how to turn the page in a book. They kept trying to do this, like it was a Kindle or something. Well, but, I mean, that shows what's happening to some of our youth, because when I looked at the computers in the children's section at the library, they were all filled. I'm very lucky, I have a grandson that when he reads, got to turn television off, sits on the couch, reads out loud. I didn't read out loud, so I would skip the words I didn't know. He has to sound them out. So it was an interesting meeting, made some suggestions to him, and the board, three members of the board that were there took them. As was indicated, we had, our council was at the continuation of Night Out at Goodie Park, and it was an opportunity for our citizens to meet and greet the men and women of our police department. The Guitar Center ribbon cutting is 12,000 square feet. It is a huge facility with a huge inventory, and I don't play an instrument either, but I'm telling you, they've got some instruments in there. I thought Mr. Smalls was going to say he was going to get his, get lessons for his grandchildren playing the drums, because they've got, I mean, not just guitars, they've got all kinds of instruments there, drums, keyboards, and so on. And, and hundreds, literally hundreds of people showed up. So that was, was a good choice, that location, I think, for the town center. Saturday, September 23rd, I had the privilege to attend the Pilate High School Crab Feast fundraiser, Crabs and Fun for All at this fundraising event. As you've heard, we were all down at River Fest. The weather gods participated, and the Laurel Board of Trade put on a great show for, last count I saw was 900. So they had a lot of, a great number of citizens came out to, to go down and talk to the crafts and other vendors, the moon bounce and hayride and so on, and the car owners who participated in the car show. Again, it was fun for all, and the weather was great. That concludes my report. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did give out a, a golden shovel award to the resident at 1020 Montrose Avenue. We did have an opportunity to go by Dunkin' Donuts and see Ms. D., and congratulate her for 34 years of service, and I think, well-deserved and very surprised. The Laurel, the American Legion Post 60 did hold their Hawaiian luau. That was to raise funds for, to the memorial out front that we have here, the City of Laurel Veterans Memorial, and so as you go outside, you can see the area there. They were raising funds to donate back to the city for that, excuse me. I didn't apologize, I didn't make the dog show. Oakland Presbyterian Church, I have to apologize. I was invited to their picnic. I looked at my schedule, I could have sworn it said 3 o'clock, but really it was at noon. So I pulled up at 3 o'clock and nobody was there, but I tried. So the emergency preparedness, Chief, let me thank you and your officers, as well as many of our first responders and the businesses that, Ken came out for the emergency preparedness night. As you're well aware, September is emergency preparedness month, and I think it went hand in hand. Did also attend the first meeting of the newly appointed City of Laurel Arts Council, and I had the opportunity to attend the Prince George County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association past president's dinner. That morning, they did have the Ironman competition, which is for the SWAT teams. Laurel, there were 31 teams. Laurel got 15th out of 31. In fact, one of the teams didn't even, couldn't even complete it. So that was one of those hot days. Laurel was actually one of the first that drew number one slot, so it was good. It was early in the morning, and they were able to, to complete it. And as I said, for a SWAT team of our size to get 15th out of 31, I again want to congratulate all of them for that. You heard about the ribbon cutting at the Guitar Center, and again, take a look, go by, there's more than just instruments, as you heard. There's PA systems, they have speakers, they have lights, all sorts of things if you're having a party or a reception, to be able to help. They rent those things as well, and as you heard, they do lessons. I did have the opportunity to attend the McSiney March, which is a fundraiser for the scholarship that they started in honor of Jim McSiney. In fact, the young lady who got the first scholarship was there as well. So again, I think, well-attended, and I think, again, they made some money for a great cause. Did, want to thank the Board of Trade for the work they did at River Fest, also is our, our city staff that assisted in making that festival off without any problems. Great day and good weather. I think somebody told me over nine, 900, 1,000 people attended, so I thought throughout the day it was a very good opportunity to highlight the many different civic organization, nonprofits, and, and the city itself. I also want to thank Councilmember Lehman for the invitation to be with her on the Fairland Regional Park for her community day as well. Again, weather was good and just a, a great time for all that attended. We are, you may see some changes occurring there at Route One across some law shopping center and between the ones, Route One South and Northbound, the old welcome sign, we are redoing that. It should be a beautiful, when it's all said and done, I want to thank Marty and staff that are working on that. They are starting to do some plannings, and then we'll redo the, they did some pointing of the, the brick and a couple of other things, so it's, it's going to be a nice entrance into the city, and I want to, again, hopefully within about the next week, Marty, should be done? Two weeks?
All of us medallions.
Okay, yeah, we're redoing the medallions on there that have service organizations. So if you went by there before, you noticed they were all faded, had to do some research to find a couple of them, see if they were still organizations, so we're adding that. And like I said, we're landscaping and some other things, so it should be really well-done. I will have a city hall in the park at Emancipation Park on September the 27th at 6:30. On October the 4th is our second annual Walk Laurel Day. That was been, is designated by the governor to get people out and to walk. We'll be doing that at 12 o'clock noon at Granville Goodie Park. Should last about an hour. We encourage you to come out, take part. And then on October the 7th, and there should be some flyers out in the other, in the hallway there, we'll, October the 7th is our Hurricane Harvey Donation Drive, starts at 11 a.m., goes till 4:00. It'll be at the First Baptist Church of Laurel, and want to thank First Baptist Church, as well as Rocky Gorge Animal Hospital. They will also be there, if you have animals, that will be putting chips in your animal, so we encourage you to take part, come out, and you can make a donation for a great cause. City offices will be closed on October the 9th, so trash and recycling will be in a holiday schedule. And then on October the 11th, we'll have my time with the mayor, which is at the Park and Recreation Maintenance Facility at 7705 Sandy Spring Road from 4:30 to 6:30. And, Mr. President, I have a couple citations I need to go down and run. Now, this is Proclamation 2017-15, whereas the Maryland Governor, Maryland Governor Larry Hogan is encouraging Marylanders of all ages to take to the streets, trails, and parks throughout the day on Wednesday, October the 4th, in honor of Maryland Walk Maryland Day, promote walking as a, promote walking as a daily activity. And whereas walking is a, provides an activity that provides health benefits, including maintaining a healthy weight, reduction in health, heart disease, stroke, type two diabetes, depression, and some cancers, as well as improving the quality of life. Whereas the mayor and city council of Laurel continue to encourage walking throughout the city by reducing walking paths, by requiring walking paths in all new developments and enhancing the existing walkways in the city. Whereas children, parents, and community leaders around Maryland are joining together to walk on this day to promote activity on a daily basis. Now therefore, I pray, I am the mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim October the 4th, 2017, as the second annual Walk Laurel Day, and encourage all sitting residents to take part in this. You want to take, right? Since you might be out there leading the pack. No. I will. Your end's our Park and Recs director, and you want to say anything, talk about your parks?
This is a great initiative, and we have lots of different parks and walkways around the city, so on all, both sides of town, we have maps of walking areas in our department, so if you come on into the Department of Parks and Recreation, we can give you that information, as well as, that information is on the website. So get out and walk in our parks and enjoy them.
The second proclamation is 2017-16, whereas October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts, by thousands of arts and culture organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for the past 30 years. Whereas the City of Laurel recognizes that the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of our citizens. Whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country. And whereas the City of Laurel recognizes all residents to participate in this vast, and in this visual arts, a way to set up, visual performing arts and arts education. And now therefore, I pray, I am the mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim Arts and Humanities Month in the City of Laurel, and call upon the citizens to celebrate, participate, promote the arts and, and culture in the city. And we just had our Arts Council appointed. With us tonight is Brenda Wheeler, Cheryl Dwyer, and Charles Evillier. Did I get that right? Why don't you guys come on up, and we'll get a, I'll present this to you all. If somebody wants to say something there, more than welcome. But this is three new members of our Arts Council. They, we're still putting the group together, so I don't, I left the meeting, I don't think there's a chair yet, so anybody that wants to say, go ahead.
Well, I say, as the, one of the members of the New Arts Council, we propose to do our best to bring forth a lot of arts and humanity to the Laurel city area and the municipality. I don't know what's out there yet, but we'll get to it and expect all the input from people, too. I mean, everybody has their own ideas of what art is and what performing arts are, and so, believe me, any type of input is helpful. So. What I do?
Tell them what you're.
Oh, my art is, you'd be surprised what it is. It's all type of design work. I do a lot of glass design, glass windows. St. Nicholas is one I did here, but I've done all over the country. Last 32 years I've been working with the government, I was the chief of craft for the Air Force, the Pentagon. So if you want me to draw a plane for you, I can do that. Anything else, I can't because I can't tell you about it. Other than that, I cook, so that helps. That's a little bit inventive, so.
Thank you, Mayor Mo, for making October the special day or month to recognize the arts in the City of Laurel. I actually, I put together the art programs at the Laurel Beltsville Senior Activity Center, so we have an avenue of the arts there, and it's not a place just for seniors. So you young people in the audience, and join us, and just, you know, continue to support the art of Laurel.
My focus will be on young children and how we can engage them in doing performing arts, music, dance, hopefully some theater, poetry. And my focus personally is on visual arts, and I do figurative sculpture. So very happy to be part of this council. Thank you.
When's your next meeting? Third, October the 3rd, right here? October the 3rd, right here, 7 o'clock. 6:30, and the public is more than welcome to attend. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll move to agenda item number 10. Second public hearing with possible action on resolution number 13-17. A resolution to name an existing structure within an existing park. Okay, I've opened the public hearing at 7:51. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:51 and a half. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I move that for approval of resolution number 13-17.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls, to have a second. Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Any discussion? Call or roll, Ms. Rao?
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
President Laz?
Yes.
Mayor Mau?
I'm going to concur, and I want to, again, thank the council for their swift action on this, well-deserved.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to agenda item number 11. Second public hearing with possible action on resolution number 14-17. A resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel approving an easement for a driveway to access 24 Fourth Street Laurel, Maryland, and authorizing the mayor to sign the easement. I've read the title and the record for the public, for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:52. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:52 and a half. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, move for resolution, the adoption of resolution number 14-17 is written to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks, to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Any discussion? Call or roll, Ms. Rao?
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Laz?
Yes.
Mayor Mau?
Anything else coming for the council? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to leave Mike out. Let me move to, yes, I apologize, Mike. I didn't mean that. Consideration of recommendation to award employee benefit insurance. Now, we had this at a work session, but through a little bit of a mix-up, we didn't have all the council members here. So Mike, why don't you just get up and give a summary of what you presented at the work session, so everybody feels comfortable with this?
Okay. At this time of year, we go out to bid for health, dental, and vision insurance. We received a very attractive renewal rate from Cigna Healthcare for health at 6%, which we negotiated to 4.4% to 4.8%. Their renewal also quoted 6.2% for vision, which was made more attractive with a two-year rate lock. Their dental insurance came in at 20%. We went out to bid on dental and received a bid from Aetna at a rate half a percent below current rates with Cigna, and a 7% rate cap in the following year. Aetna also carries our group term life insurance, accidental death and dismemberment insurance, and long-term disability insurance. The life and AD&amp;D came in originally at 14.5%. They agreed to maintain their current rates if we took their dental plan, and which leaves long-term disability, which came in at 35.2% for an estimated $9,833 increase. The current budget provides adequate funding for all of the insurances that were quoted, as well as increasing the retiree health benefit from $400 to $500 per month.
Okay, Mike, any questions of Mike on this? We have no questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I do have a question. Is this for one-year term?
Yes. Unless there's a, the rate locks that I talked about, yes, it would be a one-year term.
I mean, with everything that's going on on the Hill, we better grab this while we can. I move for the, I'm sorry.
I didn't.
I'm sorry. No, I said, I agree, and I think we ought to, I make a motion that we, get, that we allow the staff to, Mr. Flebien, to issue the contract for this policy.
Okay, we're moving forward on, the motion is to move forward with the contracting of the employee benefit insurances. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, to have a second. Thank you, Ms. Crary. Any further discussion? Call or roll, Ms. Rao?
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes, but I'm just, I haven't had a chance to really digest this, but I vote yes.
We're saving you a lot of money.
Yeah, let me, thank you, Mr. Smalls.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
President Laz?
Yeah, let me just, let me just say, I said it earlier, that when I looked at this, we have someone in Mike and in our consultant, Melzer, has been able to negotiate the fees down to where they're acceptable. They're not perfect, because all fees are going up in health insurance. And it, it just, not only for the current employees, but for the retirees, it's a benefit. And with that, I vote yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Anything else to come for the council? Meeting's adjourned.